To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
And Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson? Okay, citizens of participation, Heather McCloud.
Good evening. My name is Heather McCloud. I am running for Saginaw County Treasurer, 1993 graduate of Bridgeport High School. I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you. Like I said, I grew up here as part of a family business right down on County Highway, McCloudwood and Christmas Products. And as part of a family business, I learned the value of hard work, and I learned about frugality, and learned how to build teams, and how to build relationships. I went on to Northwood University and received a bachelor's of Business Administration with an accounting major. I've worked in accounting for the past 15 years. And that's how I feel qualified to step into the treasurer position and be on the board. So I thank you for the time to introduce you to the campaign, but I do have a secondary reason for being here. Wanted to thank the board and the administrators, all the staff at Bridgeport Spaulding School District for really preparing me. And I see your vision. Students have a solid foundation for a successful life. I really feel that I did get that here at Bridgeport High School and through the district as early as elementary school as a participant in the class program. Here I have Jan Alderton, almost 30 years after leaving her classroom, she's still in my corner. So this is a real testament to the type of people that you have here in Bridgeport. Advanced placement classes, the ability to dual enroll as a student in college, and just the introduction to accounting as a sophomore in high school really set me off on my path. So I wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the positive feedback. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Okay, moving on, agenda adjustments. We do have one. We have the draft, it's the Section 7000 Structural Program Parent Involvement Policy. It's required that no child left behind, Section 118. Update this because of received title in front.
Did we add the adoption of parent involvement policy in the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion of support, any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Allen?
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. Do you want to add that?
We'll make that at the, we'll put in...
Oh, six one.
Oh, six one, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Is it possible to schedule committee meetings at this meeting so that we can have that made it?
Afterwards, we can.
Okay.
Any other agenda adjustments? Okay, next we have the consent agenda, the payment of bills report, minutes from Monday, August 8, 2016 business meeting, and Wednesday, September 7, 2016 special meeting, and then the personnel report. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Yes, ma'am. No, it does. Motion support, any discussion?
I want to discuss some of these bills out here.
Couple. I need to check right this way.
You ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Burns, want to go?
Let's give the check number. Check number 72375. Creative Synergy Consulting. Two checks, $67,900, $15,400.
Yeah, those are both Title II. That's, they're basically the IEAS two Mark Leyden is kind of driving through there.
Did you say that come on the title, honey?
Title II.
Any others? Mr. Burns?
Pearson Education, check number 72446, $8,290.75. Page seven.
Yep, that's, those are textbooks. That's under the Adversive Program.
Okay, 72352, New Frontier 21 LLC, $5,000. On the first page, two, right at the top.
72352?
352, yeah.
New Frontier, that's Title II. It's a presenter fee for, I believe it was opening day, it says August 29th, so it was part of the year's ceremony.
Okay, 72358.
Right time advertising. That's the advertising we did, actually we did some commercial advertising during the Olympics for Bridgeport.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Didn't we pass a resolution that you put together that new spending for new things were supposed to come to the board for approval before they were spent?
That wasn't a budget. That was in the advertising budget that you approved in June.
That money was budgeted.
But, well, I thought the way the other wording was that even if it's budgeted and if it's a new thing, it's supposed to-
But it's not a new thing. It was in the budget. If it's not in the budget, then it's a new thing.
It was discussed as a budget presentation that we were going to do in order to develop a creative version. It may state within that budget.
Then you have two checks in here. Where is it? We made out to Bridgeport Spaulding Community Schools, one is for $3,000, one is for $5,000.
Okay, what's the check number?
Huh?
What's the check number?
I can't find the check number, but...
Yeah, I think I see those are for sporting events. They're cash transfers. Then we pay officials, so that's athletic related.
So we write out checks to ourselves?
Well, it's transferred to the cash account.
Huh?
It's transferred into the athletics cash account. So it's, it just moved over there. So then we have it in place when the officials come, then we have to pay them.
And I see we still have ZIMCO on here. Does that mean we're still keeping them?
Yes.
I thought that was supposed to go on for bits.
We did. The bits, the other bits came in about the same or higher. So they were the most, they were the cheapest out of all the bits.
Okay.
Pete, you referred to New Frontier 21 LLC for $5,000. You referred to that as presenter fee?
That's what it sounded like, check receipt.
Okay, and what exactly is that, presenter fee?
I'm guessing it was opening day related. We, it may have been that Dr. Muhammad. I'd have to check and see if exactly it was. But it was back from August 29th, and it was paid out of Title II funds.
So then, Dr. Muhammad who spoke, received $5,000.
I, I've checked. I mean, it was something related to that. I can let you know afterwards if you-
If he wasn't.
Sure.
I have another one, too. 72388 Moss. Who is Moss?
There, they did the technology, the infrastructure, the project that we had. Was that the 72,000? Yeah, that's, that's EWA funded, so we get 85% back on that one.
That was all part of the wireless project that we've talked about, doubled in the last two years, and we came to the board after the presentations on them. Moss was a proven contract between the university.
That's why in the past I've asked for a more detailed report on her, so we could remember what these things are.
You probably put so much information in the field.
We used to get a lot more than this, Pat.
Any other questions for Mr. Nelson? Allen?
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Sageman?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the tax rate request. Can you explain that?
So, your packets, you should receive the L4029. It's our 2016 tax rate request form. It's annual report. It's required by the state. It sets our military rates for several tax bill. And it's pretty standard. I'll just briefly explain. The first line voted general operating. Is there 18 mils not in Homestead for general operating or general purposes? That's going to be at 18 mils as it has to end of the year. The second item is your debt. As you see in column 11, it's at 6.0 mils. Last year or previous years, it was 5.02. For Ubon Associates or Bond Council, they recommended we adjust that to 6.0 for the one year to cover our principal interest payments on our building site debt. That's a one-year increase. It results in basically a 50, if you have a $100 home, it's a $50 increase for the one year. It's due to the fact we've had decreasing taxable values over the last five years, so we had to make this up. But again, it's only one year. That building site debt expires, as you know, this year. So starting right after this, we would have to explore the sinking fund or other bond authorization. And that's a separate matter. But that's basically what that is. And that will cover principal interest payments from 2017. So basically, this is, this gets sent to the county clerk, and it gets put on the December 1 property tax bills.
The 18 mils, does that need to be renewed in 2017?
Yes, that's going to be, needs to be renewed by November of 2017. The sinking fund would have to be, the timeline of that would be May of 2017. So we'd have to file for ballot proposal language by February of 2017. We could put both on the same. That's a decision we can make later in terms of the 18 mils and the sinking fund mils.
You mean both on the same ballot question?
In May, yes. Or we could do one in May and one in November. It's, it's optional.
Can you legally ask for that additional?
Yes. This is something that does not require a board approval. It was in the legislation that, it's calculated every year based on the taxable balance.
Is your motion to approve the 2016 tax rate request?
So move.
Support?
Support.
Support. Any other discussion or question? Allen?
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Morris?
Yes. And next up, we have the draft parent participation program policy. Policy 7175, parent involvement policy, under Section 7000 Structural Program. Your motion to approve the draft parent involvement policy.
So move.
Support?
Motion support, any discussion?
Does someone say that that was required by the state?
No child left behind.
No child left behind, legislation requires. For all buildings, any building receiving title in the front. Any other questions or discussion?
Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Board Superintendent Collins. Mr. Burns?
I thought long and hard today about, about this. What I was going to say tonight. First off, we had board members last week. We met with two representatives from MASB. Myself, I thought that was very informative, very good presentation. I got a lot out of it. There's more to come. There's going to be more meetings than that. But it's very helpful and well needed for the board. The second comment is the one that I wrestled with all day today, and that was the information that I received yesterday afternoon concerning the football being Friday night and the football players not standing for the Pledge of Allegiance or giving for the National Anthem. I do know that there's no law in the Constitution that makes anybody stand for the National Anthem, but we just do out of respect. And I was really sickened when I heard that we had football players that did not stand. I don't know how many. When I got to the game, it was already three minutes old. I don't know if it was one, if it was two, if it was a whole team. If it was one, it's too many, as far as I'm concerned. Made me absolutely sick to know that I'm a representative of the school board, and that was perceived though in our community, not to mention how it went all around the county. I could only imagine what, what North Branch visitors, and they had half the stands full, so they had quite a few people here. What they must have thought when they looked across the football field and they seen that. I could imagine everybody had their phone in their hand. It was probably texting back in North Branch so fast, it'd make your head spin. And I'm a graduate of the school district also. And I know there's several changes that are going on in the district. And the district will never be 4,000 strong like it was back in the day. I know that. But all the, all the progress that, that we've made in the school district in this year, we've had some staff changes and some administrative changes. And I really do feel that we have people in the right place to make the district and the schools conducive for a learning, good learning environment for the, for the students of the district. But I'm really afraid that what happened Friday night might just set us back a long ways. Set us back far enough that maybe we won't even recover out of this one. And I, like I said, I wrestled long and hard with this all day today, if I should even bring it up. And I wasn't going to. But then the more I thought about it, the sicker I got. And I don't know, like I said, how many, how many players did not stand. But I gotta believe probably the coaching staff knew something was going to happen. I can't believe it was just something that would just spur the moment deal that took place out there prior to the National Anthem. And I don't know if anybody has addressed the football team and let them know the meaning of the National Anthem and what it stands for. And maybe it's time that somebody does. Like I said, I thought about it, and the more I thought about it, the more sicker I got in my stomach thinking that that was what this school district projected. It's all over the county of Saginaw and further. And I just think it's a shame. With all the negative publicity that we get anyhow, to go and pile something like that on, it just, like I said, it just makes me absolutely sick. That's all I got.
Carol?
Can I answer Jay's question?
Carol?
I'd like to present to the board and to the community an opportunity to raise $5,000 for our sports team. This is from the Independent Bank Investing in Youth Project. It's an initiative that starts today with nominating the school. Each of the schools in the district can be nominated. And then anyone 18 and over can begin the voting process online from October 3 through the 17th. The schools that get the most votes, there will be three recognized. They will be awarded a $5,000 grant to do what they want to, do what they want with it, with their sports program. It's open to the high school, the middle school, as well as the elementary. I'd like to place this document in the board's hands so that Mrs. Sely can pass it on to the principals. We can get it published, and we can begin the process of voting so that we can get, begin on some of this, this money. I just want to point out that in a meeting with the Independent Bank last week, I learned about this. And I also learned that Freeland has won twice, and there isn't even an Independent Bank branch in Freeland. The Independent Bank, Bank branch here in Bridgeport is also interested in purchasing a banner for our football field. So I put that out, that we can, we can get busy and take advantage of these fundraising opportunities. That's all.
Before you pass it on, maybe Mr. Allen or somebody, maybe you can get it out to the faculty.
I'd like to compliment our cross-country, our track coach, our basketball coach, and our football coach. Now that we don't have an athletic association, these guys have had to go out on their own and raise funds for equipment and materials and stuff. And they're doing a fantastic job with it, and I think they should be commended because it's taken a lot of extra time and energy from them, which they could be working on more with our kids. So, and we did, if you give me the information, I can, I've been putting these things on alumni page. We did get the new coach for Saginaw County award by putting it on Facebook and putting it on alumni page and getting everybody to call. Mr. Seals has gotten money from the Garber thing, all done through Facebook and our alumni. So our alumni needs to have some credit, too, because they're really helping us collect these funds.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else?
I would like to say, in regards to what Mr. Burns was speaking of with the workshop we had with the executive director from MASB, Michigan Association of School Boards, and the consultant, Mrs. Macon, that that was an excellent workshop. He gave us valuable, valuable comments on how to become a more effective school board. Everyone that was there seemed to appreciate it, and it's just the first step. He stressed that it is important that all of us attend these workshops because if just one or two of us become effective school board members, we still are not an effective school board. We have to all be together. We have to be on the same page. We have to be team players. And I think that's a very important concept. And two, the other thing that Mr. Burns mentioned, I was out of town as a school board, it was my first time hearing, that the football players did that. But I have heard that across the nation, professional athletes and different people are trying to make a statement. And I believe anything can be a teachable moment. And this is just off the cuff without giving it too much thought because I haven't spoken to the students. But that must have been a very difficult decision for them to make in front of their school, in front of their parents, in front of their whole community, to demonstrate like that. And it really makes me want to ask them why, what is making them hurt to this degree that they have to put themselves out like this? And as much as it hurts me, I would not demonstrate like that. But I can remember back in the seventies when I did demonstrate like that. It doesn't mean that you don't love your country. It doesn't mean that you disrespect the Pledge of Allegiance. It just means that you are frustrated and you want somebody to stop and talk and listen to you. So, and I can see what people can take it either way. But since I've been there, I think I can relate to the frustration that, that the demonstrations are being, and it can be a teachable moment. And I think the next step is for the educators, coaches, whomever, to sit down and just see why. Was this just something trendy they're doing just to be cute? Or do they have some legitimate concerns in their community? Are they worried about police brutality here? Are they really? Is that something that is concerning them, that frightens them? Then that is something that we can discuss with them.
I guess I have a few things I'd like to share. The MASB workshop was excellent. But I also would like to point out that the prospective board members that are running for office were also here. And I just wanted to say thank you for your commitment to being involved at this stage in the game, this many months in advance of the election. This shows a lot of dedication to the cause, and I appreciate you both being here. Thank you. I attended the football game Friday night. I did not observe the behavior, but I did make a personal note to the coach today, both an email, and I came in early and walked out and talked to him. It is the first time since I've been in this community that I have seen our football team execute with the technical precision as they did Friday night. It was utterly amazing. I don't know if any of you are aficionados, but I sat and watched in great detail and was absolutely amazed at carrying out assignments and blocked on field and multi-trice. They were absolutely amazing. I don't know how they're going to go about with Frank, but I'll tell you why. I was thoroughly impressed with all the caliber play on the field. And what I would suggest to us is that we've got young kids on that team that may have wanted to make a statement, but we need to allow the coach to deal with that, because I'm sure he will. And Mrs. Sely already told me that she has talked with the coach to address that matter. I grew up in the late 60s and early 70s, and I can tell you that I did foolish things to, I see this as matter of free speech. The students need to have a little latitude to be able to express themselves. And this is a moment where our coach has an opportunity to tell them the implications that those actions have in reflection that has on us as a school and in this community. So let's not make a lot about something that I think is a teachable moment. I think we need to take it in stride and allow the coach to address it. And if it can, happens again, maybe it's time that we have a conversation with the students to understand what it is that they're concerned about. But let's not view this as just a negative item, and let's not be offended by other people. We choose for whatever reason to express ourselves because it's part of what we are as Americans, has given that opportunity to express ourselves in the ways that people feel it's appropriate. I'm, I have to stand and defend their right to do that because I would also stand and defend my right to do that as well. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. One, the district turnaround network that we were working on, the presentation coming up on that, should be at the next meeting. DeMicheal Brooks come in and do a presentation on what that's all about, where it's headed, purposes and all of those things for the board. Also, you have Miss Sely's superintendent update. A lot of information here. And one of the things I don't see are, we got an email on the student counts, and they're working right now on looking at no-shows and whether those kids just missed the first week of school and whether they'll be coming. So hopefully here in the near future, we'll give it an accurate count. It won't be too far, but low expectation to find out. If you have questions on the superintendent update, I'd encourage you just to reach out to Mrs. Sely, via email or phone, and ask her. If you have questions on the superintendent update, I'd encourage you just to reach out to Mrs. Sely, via email or phone, and ask her for clarification. Uh, also, there's a lot of information that comes through for all of us, whether it be from the Sely or updates, information on the budget, check registers, throughout the year, carbon for budgets such as the presentation on the wireless Moss. I'd encourage you to try and look at the agenda, check registers and everything ahead of the meeting, and get some of those questions cleared up. In this case, I know that he does, at least Mr. Brunson answered, and that might get cleared up ahead of time if you can get those questions to, uh, the right person ahead of time. So I encourage you to do that. Lot of presentation. Mr. Sely, I think you're, you're shooting for what they-
October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth, as of now, you'd like to be the budget presentation right ahead of our workshop. Doesn't seem to go anywhere yet.
Third.
Last thing I have is a comment on the, on the football players. While I don't agree with Colin Kaepernick, one of the quarterbacks for the Forty-Niners, making the statement that he did, I think that he could have picked a, I think his message has been somewhat lost. And congruent because of the anger and the outrage people have shown towards that action versus why he felt it necessary to do what he did. While I don't agree with it, to me, that flag stands for freedom, and a lot of people have sacrificed an awful lot so that flag can fly and I can have those freedoms. Freedom isn't free. There's a price paid. We continue to pay a price for our freedom, and, um, I don't think that'll ever end. Along with that price comes the reaction to our actions. So these young men did what they felt they needed to do. Why they did it, we don't know for certain, but that flag gives them the freedom to do that, even if we don't agree. And what that reaction will be, whether there'll be a negative outcome for them, they'll have to learn from that, and that becomes a teachable moment. And, um, but in my opinion, I would agree with what they did, but at the same time, I have to respect their freedom to do so. So I'm certain that, uh, Coach will at some point speak to them and determine if, in fact, they understood exactly why they were doing it. That, that's my, my two cents on it. Anything else for the good of the order? Do you have any for?
Or you can run, run with it.
Yeah, we can do that after. Committee members are here, as you asked. Anyone else who had anything else from Mr. Sely or anything? Okay, I hear nothing further, ladies and gentlemen.
Uh, I wish it was this some big, uh, you know, like they knew what they were standing up for, we talked about it, uh, we discussed it. Uh, it, it was not this, uh, it really was more of a spur of the moment kind of thing. One kid did it, the other two then, uh, supported him. Uh, we talked about what, what the flag meant. We had this discussion this morning, and I think you'll, you'll see that they'll all stand at every football game from here on out. So we did address it with them. We did have a, an adult conversation. I wish there more was, uh, like you said, like this great thought behind it. It really was. It was more teenagers, you know, uh, looking up to, you know, football role model and, hey, I'm going to do this. You can do it with me, okay? Kind of thing. And that's why, like, Coach didn't, you know, if, if Coach didn't have time to react to it, because it was a spur of the moment thing. But we called the boys in. I think you'll be very proud. I think it was a teachable moment. They had no really conscious, uh, what they were doing. And once the severity of it was brought to their attention, you could see, uh, light bulbs go on and, and they, they made a promise that they, that they will make the decision. Like you said, they had a choice not to, and I, I let them be aware of that, but they made the cautious decision that they will stand for, for, for every game.
And I know, I know we adjourned, but, but I don't, I don't, I'll just make silly media for, for a variety of reasons, but, um, this being one of them. But as I understand it, there was quite a bit of backlash, especially the alumni page about this. So, um, I'm not sure how that's going to affect the program overall. I hope it doesn't. I hope it's a balance.
That's one thing that you guys know. We did handle it, and you, I think you will see the Proud Boys moving forward, how they carry themselves after they're in the national anthem.